Counsel, are you ready?
Bob, you're certainly. What's going on?
Let's begin the study session of Des Moines City Council, and I'll lead the pledge this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, let the record reflect that all council members are present tonight. Nobody is in Hawaii or otherwise scheme.
Nine.
Yes. And at this time, we'll invite comments from the public. We have a sign-up sheet. Okay. I do believe there's one person who wants to speak, so, Jim?
I saw you were discussing the substation, so I thought I'd share with you some of the things that we've done in the Enhanced Public Safety Committee. James Heath. Jim, to everybody that knows me. 28120 Redondo Beach Drive South, number 212, Des Moines. After we took you guys in as part of Redondo Beach, we agreed to be called Des Moines. Washington 98198.
You took us in, is that...
Yeah, we took you in.
Thank you.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, so anyway, so this is a, just a citizens group that's put together by the mayor. And we volunteer to meet and work on issues. Our case was the police department. And we've had some wonderful times discussing with a very amiable and competent chief police problems in Des Moines. And this is a report that's going to be added to the leadership summit committee. And I'm going to give it to you now, because you're going to be talking about the substation.
That's fine.
It'll be modified a little by the time it gets incorporated. But if you don't mind, I'll take a minute and read it. "Members of the Enhanced Public Safety Committee applaud the mayor's creation of a leadership summit and the efforts and recommendations of the appointed committees. With the main purpose of the summit being to attract new business residents and tourists to our community, it is our firm belief that the cornerstone to bring about these accomplishments is to focus on a safer community, a community free of crime and fear of crime. Without a doubt, the results of the December summit showed that when adding all the red dots together, you guys remember how that was done if you were there? We had ninety-four dots, which indicates probably more interest in this issue than any other that was presented. Public safety issues are at the top priority for most of our civic leaders. The committee recommends the following priorities to enhance public safety. The city council needs to utilize general funds to restore police department staffing to the year 1999 level. The city council needs to pass an ordinance to get the Levy-Lid-Lift measure ready to go for May 16, 2006 election. This is the time of essence for organizing this effort. Due to the annexations of Redondo and Woodmont, the establishment of a police substation at Redondo Square has become a necessity. A decision has to be made now. The offer of Joshua Green Company for free space is fast fading. The substation has more than adequate community support." I have other things down here, but the germane thing was the substation. I don't think I'll pass out the other one. It's enough to say that our committee is unanimous in endorsing the idea that we need more police presence and we need the substation.
Thank you very much for your comments. Also, counsel, you probably have already noted that our city manager isn't here today. Grant Fredericks has taken his place, so if the camera pans in over here, that's not the fact that our city manager has gotten older and wiser. It's Grant. All right, the first item on our agenda this evening is the police substation in Redondo Square. And Chief, will you be leading us on the presentation?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this evening, we want to discuss again the proposed substation for the police department at Redondo Square. As, by way of reminder, this was, this topic first came up last year when we were approached by the Joshua Green Corporation. And they offered us a 1,950-square-foot storefront space for no monthly payment at all, no triple net fees, nothing. It normally leases for about $3,500 a month. And they offered us this space to use as a substation and also offered to help us in remodeling it and bringing the space up to code for our use. The discussion of the substation itself for the south end of the city, to me, is very important, because we have really no facilities like this down in the south end of the city because of traffic issues and other issues. Sometimes it's difficult for us to get officers down into that area when we need them. We have officers that are assigned to the central and south end of the city. The officers have to respond all the way back to the main station to conduct business. This would give us an opportunity to keep the officers down in the area, the patrol officers down in the area where they're assigned. By way of history, this item was recommended and by ordinance put on the ballot with the Levy-Lid-Lift. And it is, the topic has not come before the council since last year. In January of this year, I was contacted by the representative of the Joshua Green Corporation and advised that apparently they have new principals that have an interest in the Redondo Square. And they wanted to know if the city was still interested in establishing a substation there. And they need some kind of an answer. We're back to the council this evening to discuss this. In my years of experience, I believe that this is a good opportunity for us to get, if you will, get a foothold in the south end of the city and start dealing more efficiently and more effectively with the Part I crime rate in that area. This is an opportunity that doesn't come along, in my opinion, very often, especially an opportunity to have a 1,950-square-foot storefront operation for no monthly payment. It would again be staffed on a very limited basis for public use. It is by no means substitute for the main station at all, but it will allow us to transact certain business with the public down there that we can do at the substation at a time when it's more convenient for the public to use it.
Counsel, questions? Susan?
Okay, now, this is the third, is this the third time that Joshua Green Corporation has come back? I mean, this is kind of their last offer on this proposition?
Yes, they've held this potentially open for us for well over a year, probably close to eighteen months by now. And they're requesting an answer.
They want an answer, okay.
Which is why it's on the agenda.
Well, I'm just going to say, you know, this is a recommendation that our chief of police has made to us, and it has nothing to do, I mean, it is great where it is. I mean, this last time, you know, when this came around, it was kind of like, well, okay, well, you have one there, then we need one at Pacific Ridge, and blah, blah, blah. Well, that's, you know, might be true, but the point is, this is a good opportunity, I think, for the community. Community policing works well in any other city that's doing it. So, you know, I would like to see that we support our chief of police and his recommendations. And I think it's a great idea. So, I'm not going to say anything more about it, but I have to say that.
Ed, did I say anything?
Chief, would you please again reemphasize the kinds of efficiencies that our current police department would face in serving the community, and especially that at the south end of town with the station?
Yes. First, let me start with, once again, reiterating that it gives us an opportunity to leave patrol officers in that area where they would not have to respond back to the station to conduct business. The efficiency there is, is that we're not having them drive from point A to point B to do business. They can stay down in the areas where they're assigned. The second is, is that we can have the public come and contact us there and meet with us there, so that we can get closer to the community and closer to the various associations that are, that are down in the Woodmont-Redondo area. There, also, because of its location, at that particular point of the city of Des Moines, it's the joining point, if you will, for the cities of Kent, Federal Way, the county, and Des Moines. And they are somewhat lightly patrolled because they are in that particular corner. This gives us an opportunity to multiply our efforts by having officers from other agencies utilize the same facility with us. It is designed for that purpose. It is, it will have interview rooms where we can interview victims, suspects, if you will. We can conduct business there. Officers can come in and use it to communicate with their own stations. We'll have Internet access and such there for them. And it's a way to force multiply, if you will, the officers that we have already working down in that area without the necessity of adding additional personnel to our own staff.
Okay, is there any council member at this time that wishes to make a motion? Susan?
Okay, let's see. Okay, I move to authorize staff to complete a lease for space at the Redondo Square Shopping Center to establish a police department substation with the Joshua Green Corporation at no monthly or yearly lease cost for five years, and to bring the lease back to the city council for final approval on the next available consent calendar.
Second. Motion made in second. Into discussion, Dan.
All right.
You say that with a sigh, Dan.
Yeah, I'm trying to put together my thoughts on this matter. You know, the police chief has come back to us a number of times with this issue of a substation. And, you know, we start from ground zero. I believe that we need to restore our police services in our city, number one. So, if the substation is part of restoring services, you know, fine. But it really is a building. I think that the efficiencies that the chief has talked about are essentially marginal, and that it's a storefront if we don't have the police personnel to provide the services that are needed. So, you know, this is, this is an opportunity. I felt it should have been wrapped up, you know, with the Levy-Lid-Lift, which we did last time. And I think it was just a small piece of the Levy-Lid-Lift, because actually most of that Levy-Lid-Lift had to do with restoring officers.
Right.
That was the big expense, not this, not this substation. And yet, those are the, the officers are the people who are going to make the difference. I thought that was important enough that I gave up hours of my vacation time and, on the phone, in order to take a vote on that Levy-Lid-Lift, to make sure that it was presented to the public and they had an opportunity to vote on it. And we can all speculate on why the public didn't vote for it at that time. Everyone's going to have their reasons, and there's probably some validity to every one of them. You know, from my point of view, I'm concerned about living in a safe community. And is there such a thing as having too much police? Yeah, we're not there. So, I want to feel safe when I walk down the streets. I want to feel safe when I'm walking on Highway 99. I want to feel like I can walk into stores that, right now, I avoid because I'm concerned about safety. That's certainly not helping economic development in our city. So, you know, if, other people have got to be fearful like I am, I'm sure, in certain, certain areas. That's not good for the town. It's not good for property values. I think about, you know, if, you know, people start looking at our city and saying, it's not a safe place to live, do business, go to school or whatever, then property value is going to go down. That's going to affect, that's going to affect my pocketbook directly, in terms of the value of my home, and the value of everyone's home in this city. You know, and I don't know why people voted against the Levy-Lid-Lift. Do they feel they didn't have money? I mean, I know that there are seniors and others who get property tax breaks if their income is under a certain amount, some forgiveness of property tax, and maybe that shouldn't have been such an issue for some people, or people just feel that they're, they don't want to spend the money, or they don't think they're getting the value for their money. They're certainly not going to get value if they're, if the people aren't out there, the police aren't out there. So, I'm not sure where people were, and everybody probably has their own story. So, a substation, yeah, I'm okay with a substation, but only if there are people who are going to be there to utilize it and help provide the safety for the people of our city. You know, I'm hoping that, that there will be more investment in our community in many ways. You know, we're not the east side. That's the reality. I don't, I don't mean to say that our, our community is bad. I love our community. That's why I'm here, and I've lived here for so many years. But we're different. And I'd like to be able to attract companies that want to do, want to invest down here and have people, you know, see the desirable things outweighing the undesirable things, you know, living by the water, living so close to, to major metropolitan communities, both Tacoma and, and Seattle, and having equal access to the east side. I mean, we're, we've got a lot of things going for us. So, I'm talking a lot about this, and all we're asking about is the substation. But, you know, we have this Levy-Lid-Lift coming up, and, you know, we did, we did kind of wrap this up in here, and, you know, Joshua Green, you know, waited. I mean, he wants us there. And I do understand, you know, you only can wait so long for these things. But I would only go for, you know, going with the substation if I knew that this council had the strength, should the Levy-Lid-Lift pass, fail, that the council would have the strength to make the cuts necessary to provide the personnel that we need in the police department. And I just don't know if we have that courage. I don't know. I don't know if the public has the courage to pass the Levy-Lid-Lift, and I don't know if they don't, that we have the courage to reassign our, our financial situation at this time to provide the police services that we need. I do believe that there'll be more money coming in anyway over time with the development of that port property, which is, you can almost taste. But still, that's years, you know, that's years in the future. So, I don't know. Where are you guys? Because that's what, that's what I want to hear from.
I'll ask that question. And I'm going to comment about what you just said, because I share some of the feelings that you have, Dan, on this, and it's, it's kind of agonizing to all of us, particularly that those of us have been around before the new council came in and going through this little torture test. So, Ed?
We are clearly understaffed in the police department. The Redondo site would provide a location where the police officers who are currently here and assigned to work that area or town could spend a good percentage of their time writing reports, communicating with the staff here, using the, the communication devices, checking on people, using the electronic equipment that would be there, doing many of the functions that they, that they do and have to drive back to here and drive back to there at that, at that station. For the, for the small amount it's going to cost us over five years, and it's going to take us, I believe, the better part of five years, to get our budget balanced and restore the police, we should be getting every ounce of efficiency from our, from our police department. And this is the way of doing it. To not accept this because we want a Levy-Lid-Lift, they're, they're not the same thing. We want to make our police that we have, whether we have, whether we have lesser or more, more efficient. This is an efficiency thing. I want the Levy-Lid-Lift, and if it fails, I am one of the people that will cut, will vote to cut budget to restore the police department. And I, and I, and I believe my neighbor here will. I can't speak for the rest of you guys, because we haven't talked about it. But the fact, but I'm glad you wanted to join us. But the fact is, it has nothing to do with it. The Levy-Lid-Lift is to restore the police. This is to increase our efficiency.
Other council members? Dave?
Question first. In terms of the real estate excise tax money, it's excess monies that were collected over what were anticipated for 2005. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And real estate excise tax monies can only be used for essentially capital improvements, by and large, which this fits that category.
Yes.
But that also means that there are other capital needs that, that money will not be available for. So, everybody just needs to be aware of that, so that even though we may have had a windfall of $50,000 plus that could go to streets or some other thing...
That's correct.
...that we would be choosing to spend it on police, providing a police facility.
Correct.
So, that's something to keep in mind. It said the 1,5775 is expended from funds already programmed in the municipal capital improvement fund, and I believe I saw in here that that was also related to, as part of the police budget already. What's that coming from?
The annual fees, the annual operational cost?
So, it would be a foregoing of a transfer administrative, or, or there's been some efficiencies in terms of the police station where there's funds left over? I'm trying to understand.
Well, if, there are two, two items. If we're talking about the monthly fees that it will cost us to operate it, that is the, just the equipment and utilities and such?
No, no, no. In terms of coming up with the 67,000, 51,630 is coming from real estate excise tax. The balance, 15,775, it says would be expended from funds already programmed in the capital municipal, municipal capital improvement fund for 2005 that were unexpended for, and I thought I saw elsewhere here it was within the police budget. Is that true or no?
That, that part would come from the, from the city at large. The monthly operation, which is estimated to be a little over $1,000 a month to operate it, would actually come out of the police department budget.
Okay. No, I meant, I meant the, the capital end. Does anyone know what this was reprogrammed from? That 1,577?
You?
I'm just curious.
I think it's fair to say that this was the document that was before council, essentially the same way it was back in July. So, the budget section wasn't written to really say we're dealing with a 2006 budget instead of a 2005 budget.
That's possible.
So, the remaining 15,000 would have been applicable to last year's budget. It doesn't mean anything in the context of this year's, because we've adopted a new CIP.
I guess the question I had, Scott, is, it says this, it says this 1,5775 is being reprogrammed from something that was already approved. So, did we underexpend?
That only made context with the 2005 capital improvement plan.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if as part of the 2005 capital improvement plan, we didn't spend a contingency on a particular project, is this reflective of something left over, or did we actually have to take money that was dedicated to another project that has been, that's been reprogrammed for this?
Within the 2005 CIP, there may have been a little money left on the bottom line. But when we adopted the 2006 budget, we adopted a new CIP.
Right.
And that money's been reallocated, reprogrammed to whatever. So, we haven't been told based on how to reprogram the 2006 CIP to fund this.
Point of order? The motion that was made...
Yeah.
Was strictly the first, the first paragraph there.
Correct.
And I, it, we haven't addressed the issue of whether we pay the 51,000 upfront or whether we accept a deal to pay it in progress payments on a monthly basis over five years.
The first motion just deals with whether or not you do a substation. The second motion would deal with how it's funded.
How it's funded.
But I've got questions about what's being proposed, which is why I'm asking. So, it sounds like...
If, if you have questions on the post-second motion, it doesn't bother me right now if it, if it leads you into helping you with a decision on the first one.
Well, it does, or I wouldn't be asking it, Bob.
Okay. I'm trying to ask, answer that question.
Hopefully, we wouldn't approve it, not knowing how we were going to pay for it.
I will, to answer your point of order, it's satisfactory with the question.
I think the chief, I believe the chief wants to say something.
Chief?
Yes, the, the 51,630 dollars is for the capital improvement. Things like the computers and telephones and so on and so forth that are going to go in there would come out of other than REIT funds. And those funds, it's my understanding, the city manager and the finance director have found within the 2006 budget to move those funds to that, to, to take care of that. Also, I might add that, that Joshua Green Corporation has offered to, to put the money forward for the development of the station and simply charge us back a monthly fee amortized over the 60-month cycle of the agreement at seven and a half percent interest. So, theoretically, it would not, it would not cost us to put anything forward into the project. So, we're not taking an entire lump of sum to put forward in it, but actually borrowing from Joshua Green.
There, but the money is there.
Right.
We have the money to do it upfront if we want.
Right, and that's what I was...
Yes, we do.
And all I was asking, Dan, was where it was coming from.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that, those are, that's my question. The, the comment I have is this. During the course of the campaign last fall, I expressed concerns about a substation, particularly being tied to the staffing issue. And the conversations and the, that I've had, both with the public and with others, particularly in the south part of town, are, they're concerned about the amount of time it takes officers to be able to get to them. And anyone who's driven on 16th Avenue, I mean, will know that it can take an exceedingly long period of time, particularly in the morning and the afternoon.
Not on your bike.
You're slower.
Yeah.
All right, continue.
Anyhow, between Pacific Highway South and 16th Avenue South, we only have two major routes through town. And the reality is that people at the south end of town are not being able to get the cert, level of service that, quite frankly, they were promised when they annexed into the city. Now, Dan, I, I share the same concerns in terms of staffing with the police department, and I have talked about the same thing, and, which is why we support the Levy-Lid-Lift, which, in fact, I do believe is a separate issue. What's apparent to me is, just being a, an observer of history here in town, unless I'm mistaken, it was at the AMPM at that corner where Officer, was it Herzog, was killed? Or am I thinking of a different, was it Federal Way Officer was killed at that AMPM? And, and that corner has been a magnet for every ne'er-do-well, in part because the blurring of jurisdictional boundaries and people running from one jurisdiction to another is a way to confuse or avoid being apprehended. I think that by having a number of jurisdictions be able to share a facility there that's going to be beneficial not only to our residents, but to all the surrounding jurisdictions. Now, you could make an argument that should they contribute to staffing or some other things there, you know, perhaps. But the reality is that this offer was made to the city of Des Moines, to a facility within the city of Des Moines, and the residents within our community want this service. I believe that it will provide the patrol officers a facility to be able to handle their work without having to come back to the station, which is a couple-mile drive in the middle of traffic and rush hour. For that reason, I'm willing to support this. How we pay for the improvements will be the next discussion, but for now, I'm, I'm willing to support the substation. I think this is something we need to do.
Carmen?
I'm looking at some language that is actually from last September, and just wondering if any of what I see has had new... any of what I see has had new information added or had anything changed. It's talking about a complete crime analysis being compiled at some point, and it, it would seem to me helpful if, if I had a sense of the, the crime and the hours that it happens. This says that these, initially, the suggestion is staffing it from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. So it's not really staffed during the height of the morning rush hour, and it's not staffed during the lunch hour, and then it says staff it from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So when people are starting the evening coming-home rush, which picks up a little after 4:00 and is full-fledged from 5:00 on, I'm just hoping that we have, and it says not weekends, it says Monday through Friday. It seems to me the hours that the greatest amount of people are around aren't the hours you're talking about staffing it, but I don't know what hours the crime happens. If you have any, I'm in favor of it. I just wish I understood the reasons for some of this a little bit better.
Chief, you want to address that?
Excellent question. The, the hours of operation of the station and the services that we will be, be providing will be determined by the, the needs of the community. As we, once we finalize our presence there and as, and we start doing the crime analysis study of the area and doing major other research in the area, the public will tell us when they want to use the station. Most of the time, we'll have an opportunity to set up hours of operation that will work around every, the, the majority of the needs. The weekends, it's very easy for a lot of people to get to the main station for main services. So it's, it's the week mornings and the weekday evenings that become difficult. If the demand for service there is for later in the evening, then that's when we'll, when we'll be providing the services. If the demand is for earlier in the morning, then that's when we'll be, be providing the services. This is a, a service delivery modality, and it will be determined by the needs of the community.
Just one comment.
You still have the floor, yeah.
Last spring, I was shopping in that Safeway, and a man stole my wallet out of my purse as he directed me to look the other way while he asked me some questions about items on the shelves. It turned out by following the trail of how he used the Shell credit card, even though I instantly called and canceled it, it didn't get into the computer for six more hours. It turned out he came from downtown Seattle and shows there. So undoubtedly, he felt he had opportunity there.
And crime will occur, for the most part, crime will occur under two circumstances, where there is opportunity and where there is, where there's a chance for anonymity. And that means that, that someone won't be recognized and that there's something, something there worth taking. In this particular case, a, a presence, we believe, I believe, in my experience, that a presence in a location that has as much difficulty as that area of town, a, a police presence there will help erase at least the opportunity for anonymity. We can work very closely with the businesses there. It gives us an opportunity to be in and around the area much more often than we would normally be. And in my experience, is that the more presence that we have there, the better opportunity there is to deter crime before it occurs.
I'm confused. It was my understanding, and I may be wrong, that the hours that you showed, you indicated, you know, like the 9 to 11, and, and the 6, 6 to 8, were hours when the station would be open to the public, but that you would have offices there at other hours. Did I misunderstand that?
It's, it's both. We can, we can have someone from the main station come to the, the substation during particular two-hour increments or maybe three-hour increments when the peak demand is for walk-up services. The rest of the time, it would be closed to the public. The officers would be using it. The, the, as I suggested before, a large part of that facility is actually going to be meeting space, where the community of, of that area can actually use it for law enforcement, if you will, related purposes with us. But it's actually both. There'll be staffing times to meet the peak loads of the walk-up traffic, and the rest of the time, the facility will be closed to the public, but the officers will be using it. That, that's how we can use, that's how we can do it with our current staffing levels.
So that, that kind of puts people there not finding the traffic at other times.
The, the police facility, to me, has been a budget issue, not whether it would be a good thing, you know, although I think there'll be false expectations that we'll have a storefront with a sign, but no one will be home, because we don't have the officers that we would like to, that are on duty enough. All of last year was a budget issue, and to me, in terms of, you know, we adopted a deficit budget and had no way to pay for it. This year, we adopted a deficit budget. Last month, we spent $75,000 on, on lobbying that we didn't have budgeted. This is another non-budgeted expenditure that's being requested, without dealing with the underlying issue of, we're running a deficit budget and we can't afford everything we want. And again, nothing's been said, okay, we'll have this instead of something, although once we spend the money, that's something we won't be able to have otherwise. I'd asked the question last fall during the budget cycle, that I could consider this if you could bring me some sales tax numbers or something that might show that by the police presence in the shopping center, that revenues would not fall and would, you know, justify it financially. No attempt was made to address that. So to me, it's, again, spending money for a good thing, but it's money we don't have. So, and, you know, without the levy lid lift, we don't have the officers to put in it. So those are my points.
Dave.
I was just going to say, Scott, I, I wouldn't go forward with this if I didn't think that this council is committed to seeing our staffing levels in terms of police patrol increase. And the first opportunity for that being decided is going to be on the May 16 ballot. But, you know, I said it last year, and I've said it early this year, that whether or not additional funds are made available, we need to, as our first priority, restore police services. And if that requires making adjustments in other places in the budget, need acts or otherwise in order to fund it, that's what I'm willing to do. And that's why I, and Ed broached the whole priorities of government discussion in terms of budgeting. You know, this isn't an issue that's, that's just been facing the council over the last couple of years, or since 695, or since even 747 passed, the things that we've been stuck with, which, by the way, our residents voted for those things. You have to go back literally, you know, eight or 10 years and see the fact that we've been living off of one-time monies, and whether it's been sales tax equalization funds or whatever. I mean, this is not an overnight issue that's just crept up on us. And we're going to have to address that issue from a larger perspective. But I can honestly say that police services have got to be our number-one priority, our number-one service. You know, there's a lot of things that governments do. The city of Des Moines hasn't waded into the waters that a lot of other jurisdictions do, because we haven't had the money to do it, thankfully, in some ways. On the other hand, there are some basic things that we haven't prioritized, because we haven't been willing to make trade-offs with the other things that we have been doing. Well, it's time to reevaluate those priorities and, and what we're spending our money on. So for me, spending capital money on capital improvements for a facility that can be staffed with the existing police staffing levels, I'm willing to do. I don't think that that's a huge leap. And in terms of making that facility more available to the public, or having officers there for longer periods of time, the public will get a chance to decide that issue on May 16. But either way, I think this facility is needed.
I'm going to ask, so we start to wrap this up, but I first want to recognize Dan, and then Susan.
Yeah, we talked about this at the PSNT committee meeting earlier today, and Dave was trying to figure out what I, you know, where I stood on this, and said, I'll make up my mind.
Still am.
Make up my mind when, you know, when the time comes, because I, you know, I've had strong feelings about this particular matter and about the, the police services. You know, I, I'd like to believe that with new council members on the council, that there is a renewed interest in actually balancing the budget and making cuts in areas that would allow us to increase our police services, should we have to, if the levy lid lift doesn't pass. Of course, the devil's in the details, and the play, the things that Dave or, you know, might want to cut may not be the things that I would want to cut, but at least I see there's a desire and a, a willingness to talk about it and set priorities on a council level. One of the questions I had asked before was getting out of the lease, if we were in it, and we realized that we were never going to be able to staff it adequately, and the answer was yes, we can get out of it before the five years. So I am leaning more towards doing this, although I'd like to remind the public that, as Scott has mentioned and I have said before, that the storefront may set expectations that can't be met without the, without personnel. And I'm looking at some statistics that the chief has provided us on Part 1, Crime Statistics, and I'm noticing that there are significant increases, you know, since 2000, in particular in robberies and burglaries. And I'm thinking, for people, again, thinking ahead towards the levy lid lift, you know, the, the first time you get burgled and lose significant sum of money, that little bit of money extra you're paying in property tax for police services may not seem like a lot. So I hope people keep that in mind.
Susan.
Okay, well, I just, you know, want to say one thing, and I, I have to say, I honestly feel that we are going to be able to, you know, move things along. It's part of a bigger picture. You know, community policing is good for any city, but there's also a bigger picture, which I've heard for the last four years, and it's always about cut, cut, cut. And the thing, if we can all really put our priorities together, are to resolve a lot of things that are hanging out in our universe that can help us move along. You know, the comprehensive plan, the economic development, the zoning code. I mean, these are priorities that, you know, we have to look at making some good decisions for the city that are not going to always keep us in this position of putting, you know, more ballots out there, or what else we're going to have to cut. I mean, I don't frankly know how many more staff people we can live without anymore and to have a, an efficient government. So, you know, it's a much bigger picture, I think, but I think this is a good thing. And it is definitely separate. It's a separate thing, and I agree with that. But I think, as a new council, I'm feeling very optimistic. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of catching up to do, actually. You know, and the community, we've all suffered from that. But I really think this is a good thing, to step in the right direction. Economic development should be number one on our priority. Every other city is doing it. Went down to Kent Station today. That's just incredible. Buryan's doing their town square. We, too, can start doing some things that are going to bring in more revenue to this city than always on this doom and gloom, what we have to cut and that we have no money. We have to take some responsibility for this and move forward, so.
All right, Carmen, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
I feel that the city's citizens have to take some responsibility here. We're trying to, but we need their cooperation, too. I'm, I'm alarmed every time I hear, hear Dave or Ed talk about the significant cuts that would happen if the levy lid lift doesn't pass, because we've already done all those significant cuts. If we have to cut more, and we do need the police, we're going to be bleeding. We're, we're going to be losing things that this city needs to keep. So I, I don't want the public to get a perception that, oh, well, if the, if the levy lid lift doesn't pass, we'll just cut some more. We're at the bare bones right now, I think. And it might be a wise idea, before the levy lid lift is voted on, for some of the cuts that we would have to do if it fails to become known to the public. That might mean that Dave and Ed need to do a bit of their study in a hurry, so that, because I don't know what you're going to recommend to us, where these deep cuts would come from if they came. But, but I'm concerned that the public not get the impression that, oh, well, we'll just cut other things.
All right, I'll put in my two cents, for whatever that may be worth. Carmen, I want to thank you for bringing up that last subject, because that is a major concern of mine, too. Having been through this process now for many years, I don't know where we could even begin to identify where those cuts are going to come from. But I welcome, I, I, and join you with your challenge, so that in the event that this doesn't pass, it's going to be an interesting exercise, to see where something like that can occur when we're talking about cuts. Dan, I, I shared the pain when he started talking the first time, because there, but by the grace of God, go I. And I can recall the last attempt we made at this. It included the substation and the levy lid lift. Now it does not. It raises the question, are we putting the cart before the horse? However, I've listened to an awful lot of people since this issue came up, and the vast majority of them are for this substation. I've only heard of one person, I believe, that wasn't for it, and I truly believe that that person did it only because he had some other problem with the police department. It has nothing, it's non-related at all to the issue. So I listen to what constituents have to say. I'm going to vote for this, just like I indicated I would, since the issue first came up, but with some caution. Carmen, you said that voters need to take some responsibility. You're darn right they do on this one. If we give our pass a substation, it is my hope that everyone that is affected by this, primarily those in the Woodmont and Redondo, turn around and strongly vote for the levy lid lift. I'm putting a lot of faith also in the committee that Mr. Heath is on, when they say that they're going to go out and do a lot of heavy doorbelling and putting a tremendous effort in trying to get the public educated on this. I believe them. I believe they're going to do that. So I'm putting a lot of faith in the public this time, assuming, in, in, in my thinking that they will pass it. So that having been said, let's go to the vote. All those in favor of the first motion, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed. Okay. This is, there is another motion that needs to be considered by council, if there's a member, it was just to make it.
I'd like to make a motion.
Certainly.
But it's different than the one that's on here. My motion is that we direct staff to come back to us with a, a comparison on the impact to our budgets or, and available funds of the two alternatives that have been suggested, one where Joshua Green loans us the money, and the other where we put up the money.
Are you seconding that motion?
No, I, I just want to ask, and can we clarify that now? Is that something we can?
Well, this may be a case where, what, why don't we do this, Ed, if it's all right, rather than see that one kind of flop around right now?
Okay.
May I suggest we get into the second recommended motion, get that taken care of, and then if there's any supplemental motions, we address them at that time?
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a person or?
On the study session, we could talk about it before we even make the motion. I mean, that's the point of.
I believe, I believe Ed has made a motion. Nobody seconded it.
Nobody seconded it. I don't want to see it flop around.
Okay, so, says for, for lack of second, could I make another motion?
It fails, yes.
All right. I would move to authorize the use of $51,630 of excess 2005 real estate excise revenues for use in completing. excise revenues for use in completing the necessary tenant improvements in the lease space at the Redondo Square Shopping Center for use as police department substation and directly after prepare a budget amendment to appropriate these funds to be placed on the next available consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Made and seconded it. Any discussion? Carmen, I see your hand is up.
Is it worded so that we have a choice? Do we have the choice of just paying the monthly amount rather than fronting it?
With a 7% interest rate, 7-plus percent interest rate.
Seven and a half.
Yes, but if we're trying to come up with $51,000, are we talking about paying it out in a lump sum or are we talking?
And/or, and/or as the.
But if we are short on money, why don't we pay it out in a monthly amount that we can add to whenever we have excess monies?
Well, we can discuss that.
Okay, that's why I'm discussing.
Yes, and are you directing that? Okay, actually, is there a council member, are you trying to address that rather than get into a separate discussion?
Yes and no, sort of. I mean.
All right, I need, I want to make sure that Carmen's.
My issue would speak to Carmen's question, I believe.
Then go ahead.
Here again, I believe the motion that was read was the one written in July and there is no such thing as excess 2005 real estate excise tax. The motion basically should be to direct the city manager to amend the capital improvement plan to show this expenditure and reprogram the monies as needed. And then, so then the question is, as Carmen said, should we spend the money now or pay it out over time? I would be a little bit afraid that making time payments to Joshua Green would look too much like lease payments and the REIT people would all of a sudden say, that's not a capital expenditure, that's just a fancy lease. So, which would then make it hit the general fund, not the capital fund. So it seems the choices are either spend the capital monies as capital upfront one time or pay time payments out of the general fund. So I think the motion ought to be reworded if we're going to spend capital monies just to reference the MCI and when the lease comes back, staff could bring back the amended CIP to show, here's the money and how we had to reprogram and then we could approve the lease knowing where the money comes from.
Can you restate that then?
So I would probably have suggested authorize the use of $51,630 out of the MCI fund. And, you know, with the intention that we would see the amendment to that when the lease come forward.
And that real estate excise tax is part of that MCI fund?
Yeah.
All right, well, that makes sense. Dave?
Well, that begs the question though for the balance. I mean, that, the money was coming from two different sources. One was from REIT presumably, but as you said, the REIT may have already been spoken for when they did the CIP for 2006.
Well, that's the question that's going through my mind right now.
Okay, but the balance was coming from supposedly identified sources elsewhere within the budget, although I don't know if it was on the capital side or the operating side.
So if the tenant improvements are 70,000, if that's what I read above, then the amount in the motion should be 70,000.
In theory, it's 67 whatever. What was that, 67?
Well, it said up to 70,000 for tenant improvement.
Right. I think they identified 67,405 was what, was the number I saw.
Well, probably the wisest thing to do here is just to delete altogether any reference to the excess 2005 REIT and, yeah, and a number two, I would agree. And fill in the blank when it comes back to us, when the city manager can address this.
Well, how about, I'm trying to just find some wording quickly, just, and this goes a lot, this would sort of follow what Scott was saying. I move to authorize administration to present reprogram funding for necessary tenant improvements in the lease space at Redondo Square Shopping Center for use as a police department substation and direct staff to bring that back as a consent calendar item.
Do you see any problem with that?
I'll accept that.
With the proposed lease?
The, the first phrase or so, I need you to say again if you can, Councilmember Sherman.
I move to authorize administration to present to council reprogram funding for necessary tenant improvements in the lease space at Redondo Square Shopping Center for use as police department substation and direct staff to prepare a budget amendment to appropriate these funds to be placed on the next available consent calendar.
Don't know that a budget amendment is necessary. It's all capital funds. The reprogramming is the way Councilmember Thomas.
Prepare a consent calendar item to appropriate these funds.
Wait a minute. I don't think that we know that. I thought the 15,700 whatever is not cap, was not necessarily capital monies. It wasn't clear where that money was coming from. That's what, part of my concern is that the money was coming in two chunks and it wasn't clear. One was obviously REIT money, that's capital, but the other 15,7, it didn't say where that was coming from specifically. So I don't know if that's operating, you know, or if that's, or if that's capital also. So I think the way Dan worded.
Originally worded, it was okay. Yeah.
Your honor, the.
It can't hurt.
In the third page, the next to the last bullet, it does indicate that the additional funds, 15,775 would be funds already programmed.
In the MCI.
MCI program funds.
For 2005.
2005.
The sentence is no longer applicable because we're now in 2006 with a whole new MCI.
Yeah, we're trying to deal with renewed reality.
All right, let me ask this. I'm going to accept that motion. If we have to work it out, I'll work it out later, but I don't see where it's got full of flaws. I'm going to ask the secondar if he is okay with the change in the motion.
The last one Dan read?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I am. I need to make a comment.
Okay.
Although no one's seconded the motion I made, what I was asking was for the staff to do their homework and present us with something that we could understand and vote on. No one wanted that. I do want the center and I didn't believe in paying seven and a half percent interest if we had the money.
Right.
And I assume if we didn't have the money, they'd come back and tell us that. So that's why I went along with that motion.
Yeah, and I don't believe in paying seven and a half percent interest if I don't have it.
And that's the question that Councilmember Scott brought up to us, what are we doing here? Should we go further out with the financing end of it or should we just do it in a lump sum? I believe that's Carmen, what you were getting at.
Yes, I guess I would ask Linda, if the lease is obviously a zero amount of lease and a tenant normally does the capital improvements on a lease, I think, at their cost and the landlord fronts the capital improvements and the tenant repays them, if the lease and the other documents are worded correctly, would we still have an issue as to how it would be looked at?
We can certainly try to make it clear in the lease that it's not, that it is a loan repayment, but that raises new questions, which I do not know the answer to, about what a local government is allowed to do in terms of getting loans from private entities. That's a whole nother can of worms.
Let me just go down to this here and just ask this one question. How many councilmembers are looking towards entertaining the idea of actually doing it on monthly installment type things?
Why don't you just take a vote on what I just moved? That'll answer your question.
Well, that's true, but I just don't want to see a long discussion going on in this one issue if I can avoid it. Get what I'm talking about, Dan?
Well, but if we vote.
Call the question.
Well, you get.
Well, it takes a whole nother vote.
That takes another vote too. It takes five.
Without debate.
Okay, I think I'm reading the council anyways. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, bingo. Bear with me.
Thank you.
All right, don't get comfortable.
Really, don't you want to change the subject?
You're on a roll, you're up there, you're warm, okay? Let's jump into item number three, the police department accomplishments and wrap that one up.
Well, maybe you thought the police chief would want a cabaret license now that this has gone through.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Mayor. I would like us to come back about this time of the year and give a report on what has occurred in the previous year. By that, I mean we'll have time to look at the results of ordinances that have been passed, of, we'll get some rather firm figures on the Part One crime rate in the city and have a much better, much better picture of how we did over the previous 12-month period. We have several reports that we're going to be giving you tonight. I'm going to lead off with the Part One crime statistics that you have. I could put these up if someone could show me how it operates. Okay. Well, I guess I, I guess I won't, well, maybe I will. For the purposes of this, we've gone back to the year 2000 and we use the year 2000 as a baseline for information. So if we follow it across, now remember the Part One crimes are the more severe crimes. These are the crimes that are reported to the state and to the federal government and how we track the progress of crime in a community. So if we look across for the year 2000, we can see there was actually a dip or a drop from the year 1999 in the Part One crime rate. It starts coming up in 2001, you can see a plus 4% increase, then another drop in 2002, and then there starts a climb in 2003, 2004, and you can see it was increasing and then in 2005, we reduced the increase to what we think is going to turn out to be when the final numbers are tabulated, to a 9% increase in the Part One crime rate. The concern that I have with a steady increase in the Part One crime rate is that it is an indicator of the amount, again, of the amount or volume of serious crime that's taking place in the community. There is not a corresponding increase in the population. If the population was increasing by that amount, I would say it looks like we're holding steady, but in fact, the population of the city is not increasing, but the Part One crime rate is. We've noticed and we've had people come into the council and discuss crime in the east end, the northeast end of the city, up along Pacific Ridge and other areas, and the council has, over the last couple of years, passed a series of ordinances that I think are beginning to have the effect that we desired. The first one that the council passed was a, had to do with a graffiti ordinance and Commander O'Leary will be talking about that tonight. One of the other ordinances that we passed, a major ordinance that we passed, is a crime-free rental housing ordinance and Commander Tucker will be talking about that tonight and giving you the results of that. I think that it is a cumulative impact of ordinances that the council has passed for the police department in the community and it is redirecting activities within the department to focus on where the crimes are occurring and dealing again with the root causes of crime. I think we're much closer to the community than we were before. The, as I said before, there's a myriad of talent within the department and they do very well. The issue is simply the number of labor hours that we have to deal with the problem.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
Could you briefly describe what the difference between robbery, burglary and larceny is? Because they all kind of sound the same.
Okay. Larceny are thefts, if you will, that are other than burglary and robbery. It's a catch, I'm sorry, it's a.
God, I hate answers like that.
It's a, it's.
Okay, so if we knew what the other two.
It would be fraud checks.
Choplifting.
It would be credit cards.
Choplifting.
Those kinds of things. It's a catch-all and there's a myriad of elements that go into it. So is, does that help?
Well, then what's the difference between burglary and robbery?
That which is not robbery or larceny.
By definition. The robbery, of course, deals with theft from a person and burglary.
So would what Carmen explained happened to her be a robbery?
If it was, if force or fear were applied in the process of it, yes. If it's a simple pickpocket where there's no resistance given, there's no force used, then it's more of a theft than it is a robbery.
Okay. And burglary is breaking and entering type?
Burglary would be from a dwelling or a building and not a person or a car.
Car theft is its own category and, you know, I was hearing reports of how many cars were missing from the high school parking lot last year and it was astounding me and it, from what I, my impression is, it's almost a, there is no attempt to prosecute, jail or whatever. It's almost like society has kind of categorized that as an acceptable crime, more so than a robbery or burglary or larceny. Can you speak to, I mean, and the motor thefts, you know, are where the largest increase came from. So what, you know, are these kids that take a car for a joyride and then leave it? Is it professional auto theft, rings at chop shops? What is the characteristic of the car theft that's taking place? And is car theft, the vehicle's plain missing or is it breaking into it and taking something out of it? So like if a radio goes missing, is that motor vehicle theft or something different?
Part of the definition of theft includes the intent to permanently deprive. So there is, there is a gray line here between people who take a vehicle simply to use it or joyride as to whether or not they have a specific intent to ever return the car or not. And that's, it's difficult to prove because it does, because it is a felony category, it will require specific intent. So most of these would either be the gray lines of whether the person had the, will find the person in the car and they say, well, somebody loaned it to me and I didn't know it was stolen. It's pretty tough to show specific intent in a theft. So these would be the actual number that we would be looking at of those vehicles that were taken where it was believed that the intent was to permanently deprive. So these, and these numbers go up, it's more of a function of capacity than it is the society, I think,'s willingness to deal with it. There are only so many prosecutors available in King County to prosecute crimes. There's only so much jail space and there's only so much prison space. The current sentencing criteria in the state of Washington to sentence someone to state prison for motor vehicle theft requires seven felony convictions. Seven felony convictions.
Convictions.
Convictions, not arrests, convictions. And that either means that they pled guilty to the charge or there's been a jury trial or a court trial and a conviction.
But that almost makes it open season for stealing cars because there is no consequence.
That is, well, since I believe that behavior is determined by its consequences, that is exactly why we're seeing the numbers increase.
So even if we were to double our police force and efforts on car theft, that doesn't mean that the numbers would go down because even if you catch them, they just get another day to do it.
Well, you might keep them from coming to your city and doing it.
It would allow us more labor hours to investigate crimes. Right now, you have essentially four investigators in the Des Moines Police Department trying to do everything. Many of the, many of the things that we're investigating are actually mandated. Domestic violence, child abuse and so on are mandatory. We don't have, obviously, we'd investigate them anyway, but we don't have a choice. So a lot of the crimes that go on in the community, we have to look at an A, B or C level of case. A level would be someone that's in custody or a known suspect that we can address. In the case of auto theft, many times, it's the same person committing the theft over and over again because obviously if you have to have seven felony convictions and there are people in prison right now who have had the magic number seven, then it tells us that it's a certain portion of the population that's committing motor vehicle theft routinely. Additional labor hours would allow us to investigate. Additional labor hours would allow us to investigate more of the auto thefts, which would lead us to the person that's doing it, which means that we could arrest the person and get them off the street faster and reduce the number of these crimes. Now, the state sentencing guidelines, I have been told, would increase where we would have to have more felony convictions if, in fact, more felony convictions occurred. So for instance, the number, magic number seven, might go to eight or nine or even 10 felony convictions. You've heard me say over and over again that where we need to go is where the opportunity for crime occurs. We need to go to the systemic issues of how the crimes are occurring, harden the target at the schools, maybe be able to place an officer in the area more often at those times that the crimes are occurring. But right now, we don't have the labor hours to be able to do that. I think that we can deter more crime, quite simply.
Sorry to derail you, but that helps me get this in better context.
And thank you for the question. So we were blunting, if you will, the increase in the Part One crimes somewhat, but still in all, it's an increase over the last year's major increase in the Part One crime. Calls for service statistics tell us again, if we follow down the years by comparison, that for the year 2000, there was a drop in calls for service, which corresponded with a drop in the crime rate. As we come into 2001, we start seeing the numbers pick up. In 2003, there's, you can see there's a decrease in calls for service, then the steady increase again. These calls for service indicate a variety of things that we get calls for service for. But it shows a steady increase without a steady increase in the population of the city of Des Moines, which means that the demand for service is up, and there are issues in the community that the community wants dealt with by the police department, far and above any increase in the population. And these are steady trends that I think that we need to look at, and why, for instance, we came, we have come to you for certain ordinances that we think will help abate this, and it's obviously having, I think, the right effect. And also why, for instance, we're looking at the substation to be able to respond more quickly, if you will, and hopefully deter some of the calls for service in the south end of the city. Any other questions about this segment of the report? I'd like to have Commander Tucker then present information that we have on the Crime Free Rental Housing ordinance. As you'll recall, when we came to the city council with that ordinance, and the city council passed it, we said, "We'll be back," and it is to report back to you on what we think is the impact of that ordinance.
Good evening. I have 10 copies up front, up there, and I have more at my seat. To give a little bit of quick notice about the documents coming in front of you right now. I apologize for them being late and not getting to them today. I've been extremely busy at work lately, and I've had a hard time gaining certain tasks. A little bit of information about what you have in front of you. In 2004, we came to the council with the rental house, rental property ordinance. At that time, I had provided statistics in reference the different apartments and homes, and using comparisons on the calls for service from an apartment complex to an equal number of homes in geographical areas of Des Moines. The report that's in front of you right now is using the exact same apartment complexes and the exact same group of homes for the exact same timeframe that I did when I provided it the first time, but for a different year. So the numbers you're going to see, though, the comparisons are January through July 15th of '04, like was first presented, and now it's January through July 15th of '05. I can do this two ways. I can go page by page, which sometimes gets pretty boring. Or I can just hit a couple highlights and allow the council to ask questions.
The latter would be preferable.
I imagine so. The one, the couple things to notice, and I didn't put page numbers on these again, so when I count, I'm going to count back from the first page. If you go to the third page in, it shows the comparison for calls for service for all four of our patrol districts from 2004 to 2005 in that timeframe window. That gives you an idea that the calls, what the calls for service were dealing with. So in 2004, there were 8,800 calls for service in the first six months. In 2005, there were 9,358 calls. Yes?
On the districts, I forgot. Maybe it doesn't, ma'am.
Briefly, the patrol districts are four districts. The first district will be the North Hill and up to the Safeway area of the north end of Des Moines. The second patrol district is basically from 216th to Kent Des Moines Road, the water, 2I5. The third patrol district is from Kent Des Moines Road to approximately 252nd or so, Park Highway to the water. And the last patrol district is the Woodmont Redondo area.
Well, that District One, which is North Hill, is really doing their job in trying to keep the crime down in this city. I'm very impressed with that.
Absolutely. The interesting point about Area One, which we'll get to in a second, is Area One has very few multifamily residents. It has, the only business in Area One, technically for us, is the Safeway complex, which is quite a high call volume. To give an example of it, on the next page, you'll see Heritage Court Apartments listed. And it compares, in Heritage Court Apartment, we had 44 units. So the comparisons that we used were 44 homes in Redondo, 44 homes in North Hill, Highline, and the central area. The same comparison were from 2004. If you look at the next page, here's the idea of how well this ordinance has worked, in our opinion. In 2004, Heritage Court, in the same six-month window of time, had 128 calls for service. In 2005, in that same window of time, we had 21.
That's great.
I want to hit a couple highlights here. We had one of our comparison apartment complexes went up in numbers, and that was Emerald Court Apartments. Emerald Villa, excuse me. Keep wanting to call it a different name. But the severity, the calls went down. The smaller calls went up. The complex is now being renovated completely with a new owner, and it's going to be turned to condominiums. And it's running half vacant right now. And the owner's bringing a lot of money in it, trying to get reconverted to condominiums with a heck of a view of the water. That's the only complex that really took a spike in calls for service. And that was available on the next page. I want to move down.
Going back a second, on the total number of calls for service, I noticed there was a huge jump in the Woodmont Redondo, like 50% almost. 450 additional calls for service between 2004 and 2005. Is there anything that counted that?
I can tell you that the Safeway complex, the Redondo Square complex, went from the low 200 calls for the first six months of 2004 to over 300 calls in the first six months of 2005. Across the board, we've seen small increases in the average call for service per resident. And I'll show you that, in fact, I'll just go there right now. We find the page here for you. The fifth page from the back, the last four pages are the areas of a comparison that we use for the residential areas. You'll see here that this shows the average call per unit compared from 2004 to 2005. The first unit listed there is Bayview Meadows has 73 units. In 2004, we were averaging .78 calls per unit. In 2005, we're down to .45. You'll see by looking down the line here that we've pretty much gone down all the apartment complexes. We have a couple that stayed pretty close. There's one here in particular, which Highland Village went up a little bit. But what we found was a lot of the pressure that we're putting on the Emerald Villa Apartments, they all moved over there. And so we had to go over there and help them get them out of there, too. Interesting point, Highland Village is now going condominiums as well, too. And the call volume's gone down significantly. Overall, we have a big winner here. Very, very happy with the way things are going with this ordinance. Finding that the managers, the owners of the property are more responsible. They're taking a lot more time and getting the proper people in there, and are holding the people that live there accountable.
Kevin, can I just ask you one question? Because are they, like all these apartment managers and so forth, you know, are they, like, how do they, are they billed every year, kind of, or do they just know they have to pay this every year?
It's part of your business license.
Okay, so notice goes out, or they just, they understand what they're supposed to do?
Correct. When they apply for their business license or to renew their business license, they're also given the same information about the endorsement fees that are required. So it falls in the same criteria for having it all accomplished and taken care of by February 15th, like a normal business license.
Okay.
Yes?
Well, I mean, you're getting early trends from this, and, you know, I really, this is going to need years to be in, of course, to really see long-term trends. But I just was looking through here and noticed that it looks like calls to the Des Moines Marina have gone up considerably. What's going on down there?
In talking to Commander O'Leary about that and the chief, the best that we can figure what caused that, we've had a huge increase of problems with people in there after hours in the north parking lot. We've had to put a lot of emphasis on our patrol teams to go down there and start dealing with the problems with people going around the barricade and being in that north lot. We get a lot of complaints from the owners of the condos at that north end, which takes up a lot of our time. Every time we go down there and do something, it generates a number. So that would be a good reason for the increase down there. The crime on the boats, the theft on the boats and stuff, we have seen no big spikes on that.
Are these gangs of kids hanging out, or...?
This is everybody from the fisherman who's out there with the loud stereo that shouldn't be down there, the vehicle, to the kids coming in and out there, to people just stopping to look at the water and the weather, but they went around the barricades to do so. And the apartment owners down there are very vigilant about making sure that lot is empty when it's supposed to be empty. Again, I agree with you, Councilmember Sherman, on the fact that this is very preliminary numbers. I did apple-for-apple comparisons to give you an idea that we have a winner here. And we think it's making a huge impact, and we think that the reason that Part One crime rates down to not double-digit increases is due to a lot of these ordinances. I'm looking very much forward to coming back to council next year with full year's data and keep coming back and showing the progress of what we have.
I see for the, for, in the future, scheduling somewhere that there's some small changes you want to make to that ordinance?
Yes, and that's being done through our city termings office, just some cleanup stuff. Anytime we put new ordinance out, as you get in the practice stages of it, you find areas that need to be tightened up, similar like the cabaret license that was going to council tonight. We'll have the alarm ordinance will be coming back with some minor changes to the PS and T committee first. We'll be also bringing back some issues with the hotel motel ordinance to tighten that up a little bit more and make it more effective. And that will be going to the PS and T committee first as well. Any other questions? If at any time council would have any questions, I'm available during the daytime. If you want to go in there a little bit more depth, I'm glad to meet with you. Again, I applaud the council. I think we have a winner here.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to basically give you a report card on the results of two ordinances that council enacted at our request. One is on the alarm ordinance, and the other one is on graffiti ordinance. I'll start with the graffiti ordinance that council passed back in July of '04, and we now have a full year 2005 to report back on some statistics. First thing that I would want to point out to council is graffiti, from the law enforcement perspective, and I think from a lot of community members as well, really represents the image and perception of the community with the number of incidents that they see where graffiti's been sprayed onto or what we sometimes call tagged onto a building, stop signs, or other objects within the community. And it really gives that perception to the community that the area's not safe and that it's in some sort of state of decay. But I really applaud the council for the wisdom to enact the graffiti ordinance and give us some tools to deal with a growing problem that we saw in the community. Back in July of '04, we took, after council passed the ordinance, we took a number of steps to inform the community about the graffiti problem, the impact that it has on the community as a whole. And we notified them through a variety of means, including putting notices out in the paper, out in the city currents, on the city news channel, and so forth. But I think by far, the most effective means that we've had to notify the community has been with one-to-one contact with property owners and managers of places that have actually been tagged with incidents of graffiti, where the officers are making contact with them, providing them with a brochure about the graffiti program, telling them what sort of impact it has on the community, and what their obligations are to get that cleaned up. In 2005, we had 95 contacts with property owners or managers that had graffiti tagged onto the building. And oftentimes, as you're aware, one building might get tagged in multiple locations, but that's still just one contact. And I know, too, that when the council enacted the ordinance, there was some hesitancy to put some of the enforcement teeth into the ordinance to obligate owners to clean up the graffiti with the fear that, basically, we might be twice victimizing the community members by obligating them to clean up incidents of graffiti on their property. But as you can see from this report, the degree of voluntary compliance has just been outstanding. I think once we've been able to make contact and educate the members of the community about the impact of this sort of thing going on, they're more than willing to step forward and take responsibility and get it cleaned up. One thing that's not in the report, and I apologize, has to do with offenders that we did contact in 2005 that were involved in graffiti activities. And we actually arrested four different groups of individuals that were tagging or doing graffiti. And those were juvenile offenders, and so I can't tell you what the outcome of those cases were. But again, this ordinance has given us the tools to deal with that, and that certainly, I think, has been effective in trying to reduce the overall rate of graffiti in the community. I think as you drive through the community now, you see a lot less prevalence of graffiti through the different areas of our town. There are a number of cases where we have made contacts that we haven't made resolution, and we have actually sent some cases to code enforcement as the ordinance provides for. But primarily, that's meant to try to help identify and, more importantly, locate owners or managers of property. In some cases, that's proved to be very difficult. There's one building up, for instance, on Pacific Highway South, vacant office building that was a home conversion that has graffiti tagged on it. We've simply not been able to locate the owner. So there's just a handful of incidents where it hasn't necessarily been particularly effective. But overall, I think you can see that the ordinance did what we intended and that we've been able to reduce the incidence of graffiti. Yes?
to pay, he or she has to pay the tax, why can't you trace them?
Well, the locating, when property changes hands, by the time the information connects up with the reporting elements that we use to get the information as to where people are located, there's a, sometimes, a three-month, four-month delay before all those records catch up.
Is it hard to ever apprehend these people? I mean, do you guys actually find them?
Well-
Do you see it, I mean, like in federal way, and even Redondo, I mean, I've seen areas now, it seems like in federal way, it really is everywhere. I see it everywhere down there. It's a lot better here in Des Moines, but, I mean, they have been, like in Redondo recently.
It is very difficult to apprehend these type of-
When do they do it?
Well, hours of darkness primarily because they've got the element of concealment. We have to remember, too, that usually, one or two individuals that are out there in the middle of the night doing this, it literally just takes them seconds to put this tag on the building or the sign, and they're gone. So if the officer doesn't happen to be there at that particular moment in time, somebody doesn't see him, it makes them very difficult to catch in those situations.
Including the ones that tagged this building?
I'm sorry?
Including the ones that tagged this building?
Including those. The second report that I'd like to share with you is the alarm ordinance that was passed in March of '05. It went into effect in April of '05. Prior to the ordinance, we had no effective means to know who had an alarm in the community, but more importantly, we didn't have any information on how to contact them and what the status of the premises might be, and more importantly, who lawfully should be on the premises so that we didn't get ourselves into situations of severe liability by involving ourselves with someone who had a legitimate interest in being there. We have, at this point in time, almost seven hundred systems that are registered in the city. And in the time that we've been involved in the registration process, we've had almost a twenty-three percent decrease in the number of false alarms. And that's, I think, a very good step. It's less than I personally wanted to see, because I've seen other communities with bigger decreases. Their ordinances are slightly different in the language as far as the number of false alarms that are allowed before they start billing, and that's one of the issues that we hope to take back to the Public Safety Committee to get a recommendation on potential changes in the ordinances.
How do you define what constitutes a false alarm?
Well, number one, the very obvious is we go to an alarm and the premise is broken into, and especially if we catch a bad guy there, I mean, that's the obvious. But if we go to a false, if we go to an alarm situation, there's no sign of entry, there's no obvious explanation for why the alarm was activated other than potential system malfunction. More often than not, it's operator error, where somebody simply didn't know how to properly arm or disarm the alarm. Those are pretty obvious.
But it's a case where there's no obvious sign that somebody triggered the alarm?
Correct.
Somebody who shouldn't have been there.
But as you can see, as far as labor hours and reductions in cost to the department, the impact of the ordinance has been fairly significant. We've been able to save, just in 2005, over a hundred labor hours, which translates into a cost of almost $5,000. Another almost $5,000 in dispatch fees that were saved. And in getting the systems registered, and through false alarm fines used as a deterrent, an additional $17,000 was realized through this program to offset the cost of us responding to alarms. And I think that's had a great impact for the community and the city. Thank you, John.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there, if someone has an alarm and hasn't paid, registered, and the alarm, the police get called, is there a fine that's greater than the fine for repeated alarms?
Yes, there is, there is a fine that has been set up for failure to register. We try to use as much discretion as possible, because what we want people to do is register their alarms, and typically, those folks will get a warning. If we get a second alarm out at that residence and they're not registered, then they would be fined for failing to register. Typically, how that is applied. One more question, John, for you.
Commander O'Leary, would it be fair to say, based on the numbers that you have down here, the $17,000 in fees collected, and the still around a thousand false alarms, that the money we're bringing in is way less than the cost of the false alarms in terms of hours of labor and dispatch costs?
Oh, absolutely. We're probably, I'm speaking off the top of my head here, but, I mean, the cost of responding to false alarms prior to this ordinance was somewhere in the neighborhood of 25,000 to 27,000.
So we may be getting close to breaking even, but we're not anywhere near there yet?
Correct.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Department.
I'd like to complete the report tonight to the council on the progress of the Police Department by referring to the Police Department's five-year strategic plan. I had the opportunity to meet with the new council persons and discuss this very briefly with them, and give them copies of the strategic plan. The month of March, my desire is to have us contact the council again, complete, all members of the council, and discuss the results of the first year of the strategic plan, and get your direction on your priorities for the Police Department, so that we can synthesize that into our strategic objectives, to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to accomplish what you want the Police Department to accomplish. So the summary that you have in front of you basically reflects over, about, over twenty percent of the objectives that we sought to achieve in the first year were achieved. I would like to have seen us achieve more of them, but with the labor hours that we have available, and with the funding that we have available, I think that the department did an excellent job in completing those. So, again, this is a report for your review. We'll give you time to look at this, come back to you during the month of March, hopefully, and we'll be working through the city manager and the mayor to contact you individually and discuss the results, and also discuss the priorities that you see now. The strategic plan was put together with input from both the community, city staff members, and the city council. And it's imperative that we get the view of our customers at all levels and all areas to help us determine what the priorities are for the Police Department in this community. So we look forward to meeting with you.
Thank you. Scott and Dan.
We didn't have a new ordinance, but we did have, we were doing an increased emphasis on pet registration, and I think part of it was, there was a plan where we were going to go door-to-door and get alarms on dogs and cats and other things. Did that program go anywhere? Was that abandoned? Is it still ongoing? Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Well, I, and we, it would be nice to do a report on that and bring that back to the council, and I think that we will. Our first attempts at going door-to-door and discussing the new ordinances with people and getting people to sign up for the alarms and so on, was incredibly labor-intensive and did not produce the results that we were looking for, quite frankly. We put out more flyers in the community. We had the officers contacting people in the field. For instance, if they responded to a call and they saw a pet in the residence or on the property, we encouraged the officers to ask, is the pet registered, and do you know how to do it, and leave the brochures behind? And so we found other delivery methods to work, but we did not have enough volunteers to canvass the entire community. But I think it's another one of those programs where we go out, we just come back year after year to remind people and get more people to comply with these. But I would like to report back on that. I think Jan Magnussen's in charge of our program, and she's also, by the way, I think it's in the month of March, month of March, the City of Des Moines Police Department hosts the Animal Control Academy for new animal control officers in the state of Washington, and Jan Magnussen is and has been, for the past several years, the coordinator for that program. So another shining star in the City of Des Moines and the Des Moines Police Department. And so there might be a gap here. I know she's working very hard on getting ready for the academy, but I would like to report back to the council on our progress with that.
Dan?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that comparing the alarm ordinance and the crime-free housing ordinance, the crime-free housing ordinance is certainly a more complex ordinance, and I would expect a little more time to see results. But there's no question, there were results with your alarm ordinance. I mean, unquestionable results across the board.
As we predicted, and as Commander O'Leary was saying, one of the real important things is that we know who has the alarm. So we know, when we respond to an alarm call, we know who to look for. And so all of this, all these steps that the council has worked with us on have been incredibly beneficial to the Police Department for a variety of reasons, including our service delivery, reducing our liability in responding to those calls for service, and ultimately providing better service to the community. So thank you again for your support.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Council, why don't you take a ten-minute break, and let's get back and wrap up the meeting. We could just wrap it up. The meeting's back to order. The final item on the agenda this evening is draft ordinance number 05-074, cabaret licensing on the first reading, and our city attorney will be the discussion leader.
I have, I hope, a thirty-second presentation. In 2001, the council made the smart decision to stop doing unclassified use permit hearings every time somebody wanted to have karaoke at their bar, and let the city manager make that call. Unfortunately, when we amended the code, there was an oversight, there was a correct amendment in the business license code, but the references to the unclassified use permits in the zoning code were not deleted. So this is a request to make those changes in the zoning code to be consistent with the business license code current practice.
Dave?
I move to suspend Rule 26B in order to enact draft ordinance number 05-074 on first reading.
I think I, who was first? Okay, Susan.
She was on second.
All right. Yeah. What's on third? Anyways, discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Second motion?
I move to enact draft ordinance number 05-074 relating to business licensing, removing the references to cabaret licenses and single-event use cabaret licenses from the unclassified use permit process, amending DMMC 1824-050, 1826-050, and 1832-020.
Have a second?
Aye.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Very good. You're right, we didn't need the break. You guys surprise me sometimes. Okay, we will, I'll entertain now any motion to adjourn with the understanding our next regular meeting will be March ninth.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
See you next week.